You'll have to do the admittance of people. I'll start the first ones.
I'm here. Maddie?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey Gary, can you make me a co-host?
I can.
Okay. Hi, Michelle. Everybody here? Am I muted? Gary, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
All right. Should I start?
Yes.
I don't see Caitlin.
Let's see. Wait, I gotta get Caitlin's jumping on right now.
Sheldon? I don't see Sheldon.
He's there.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Should I start? Sheldon's nodding yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order. It's 6:04 PM. The first thing we need to do is adopt and approve the agenda for April 7th, for today. I need a motion and a second.
I move to adopt the agenda for today for April 7th, 2020.
Do I have a second? Everybody's muted.
Let me unmute. Let me see about unmuting. Let me see.
Yay, I second.
All right, I'm unmuted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And if has public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Do not have any public?
We, yeah, we have a, well, we, so just to say that, that folks that want to provide a public comment, it listed in the agenda, it says to go to pedalumacitieschools.org backslash public comment form. So let's wait a second for that.
Can we push this later on the agenda maybe?
Can I just move on and come back to that?
We can certainly come back. Let's, let's do that.
Okay, and then report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Sheldon and I were at a ballot measure meeting. Anybody else? Things have been pretty shut down, so.
I haven't left my house in two weeks.
Okay.
Neither.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So moved.
I have a second.
Okay, is there any comments or questions on these things? Pretty basic.
Link to the public comment forum is now in the chat for any viewers that might be watching.
Okay. Any comments on the consent agenda before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on. Action items. Resolution 192025, the Board of Education, the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma approving closure of the Gateway to College Academy.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Conversation, issues, questions?
Maybe it'd be good. Maybe it'd be good just for Gary to, you know, run down a brief explanation for the record because some folks might not be aware of what's going on.
Right.
So this has been an issue that we've been working on the last two years with the junior college. Part of it is the challenges related to it have been declining enrollment challenges. The other part of it has been the structure of the charter, the actual where most Gateway to College programs do not run into the structure and the configuration that we have in our district. There's an incredible amount of liability related to that. We met with, with Gateway to College or the JC leadership last year with the Sonoma County Office of Education Superintendent Harrington and explored options moving forward. Unfortunately, the, the enrollment has continued to decline and it has gotten to a point where the way that, Chris, perhaps you can talk a little bit about how dollars get passed through in this program and that'll make some sense when I, I'll come back around on it.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Wait, wait, no, 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 no.
Chris?
She's still muted.
Gary, you have too much power.
I'll unmute her. Yeah, sorry, Chris. I'll, I'll, let me, let me get to you.
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
There we go. Hi, Chris.
Hi, guys and gals. I'm sorry, what was the question, Gary?
Well, Chris, I wanted you to explain a little bit about the financial challenges for the junior college and how the gateway, how gateway dollars are processed through.
Okay, so Gateway to College, the way that it's been structured is that basically we do our same LCFF calculations that we do for everybody else and part of the challenge for Gateway is not only that the enrollment has dropped but also that the attendance is at a far lower rate than what we find at our more traditional schools and that creates a challenge for ADA, therefore creates a challenge for revenue. In addition, as the charter program has evolved, we have had to add staffing this year, which has created additional financial burden on the program itself. And by we, I really mean the junior college staff, Vanessa, the director. At their direction, we added that staff, so it wasn't Pedaluma City Schools. The way it's structured is that we account for everything we own, the charter, if you will, in partnership with the junior college. We cover the staff that we hire for our portion of it. So we hire teachers and, and other special service staff to provide the instructional program and meet the special education needs, IEP needs of the students. On their side, they hire their own staff and they collect what's called FTEs. FTEs are likened to our ADA to help to cover part of their burden or their staff that they hire. They also hire Vanessa, the program director, and they hire the clerical and accounting support staff that do the attendance accounting and so on and so forth. So we cover all of our costs first and then we pass on whatever balance is left over to help them cover their costs. And over the, go ahead, Gary.
Well, go ahead, Chris. It's fine.
So over the past three years, that share has shrunk fairly dramatically as enrollment in ADA has dropped, therefore revenues dropped, but the cost and the level of staffing that the program has needed has increased. And so it, it has become a significant challenge for them to continue to cover the disparity between their costs and the revenue that's being passed through by Pedaluma City Schools. And don't forget, in the first four years of this program, we were receiving significant one-time revenue from the state. As a charter, they were also receiving that one-time revenue and that was really helping, I believe, to close the delta between their costs and what the LCFF generated for their ADA. So I think that particular loss of funding was very challenging for the, for the charter.
So when you take into account what share is passed through, it doesn't nearly cover the costs associated with the program. And we know both the junior college and, and the district are committed to continue some partnerships. We're committed to making sure that our students that matriculate through have opportunities, should they choose, if they want to, to still take courses there. But this is, this is not a tenable situation for them. We have liability concerns. It makes the most sense right now to, to look for other ways that we can partner together. It's, it's not necessarily a terrible thing. It's, the program's a great program. It is, just at this point, it's cost prohibitive.
What about students? I know there's a lot of juniors that were in the program.
And the teachers, what happened?
Do you want to unmute Liz?
Yeah, I'll let Liz get, hop on.
Thank you. So as far as what we did was we looked at, you know, there's four groups of students in general. We have students that live outside of the district and the rest were students that live in the district, those that were, you know, finishing and graduating, those that are over 18 years old and still looking to gather some credits and those that are under 18. So Maddie, like you mentioned, we have, you know, a rising junior and a few rising seniors for the program. And so we had Sharon Howell at San Antonio. She looked at every student's, every single student's transcript and went through and then talked about, you know, kind of did a write-up for Gateway to College on what would be the best next step for the student. And so whether that is, you know, enrolling in, in your own district of residence, for some student that's going to be going on to adult ed and finishing off credits that way, maybe in, for some students, that's going to be going to San Antonio because they were credit deficient where they sit right now as a junior or senior. And for some students, that's going to be maybe going to one of the all dead sites like Carpe Diem or Sonoma Mountain or even back to the comprehensive high school. And so out of district kids that all of the students can concurrently also continue to take classes with the college if it works out, you know, maybe evening if it works out with their day school schedule. So the plan was after the board meeting tonight, depending on where this conversation goes, Vanessa and Gus, the counselor, will start reaching out to students one-on-one to let them know what the best recommendation is. And then our sites, whether that's San Antonio or adult ed or one of our regular comprehensive schools will reach out for intake. So there's a pretty seamless transition for the students.
Good. Who out of district kids were there? Are there? How many?
Out of district?
Oh, there were very few actually. I wanted, it was less than five. Less than five were from out of the district.
And are the teachers part, will they be then placed in Pedaluma City Schools?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
There's, there's two teachers there right now and so, and they'll have a spot in Pedaluma City Schools because they were higher up on the tenure ladder.
That is it in a nutshell. We were, we're, we're going to continue to be great partners with the junior college. Yeah, Sheldon.
You need to unmute him.
Is, does the college board have to act on this too or just us?
No, it's, this is our, the program is, is, is our program.
Gary, may I?
They certainly will be bringing that, they certainly will be informing them.
Sure. I want to add one last piece. One of the things that we learned, well, first off, we've had a tremendous partnership with the Gateway to College, with the Santa Rosa Junior College. We've worked with their team very closely over the past few years and so I just want to acknowledge that. But also I want to just say, one of the things we learned as we've gone through this process is that it's really important that we close the charter down as of June 30th. And so doing the timing of this is such that we close it down as of the year-end fiscal, our fiscal year-end as of June 30th. If you try to close a charter mid-year, there are pretty significant financial penalties that go along with that. So part of this is trying to also make sure that the timing of how we do, how we do this, there are several next steps. The resolution is the first step. We will be notifying the California Department of Education, all of the associated district of residents for any students that are currently enrolled, et cetera. So we'll be working through the mechanics of all of those next steps. The resolution is the first step.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? I think we are. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to the next action item. Resolution 1920 just 26 of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, designating public works projects as an essential governmental function and delegating authority to designate further public works projects as an essential government function.
So moved. Or moved to approve, whatever you want, whichever.
Second?
Second.
Okay, explain.
So we have, we have numerous projects that we are either in the middle of or we're gearing up for. Many of those relate to things like replacing our roofs and our mechanical systems.
So their bond projects.
Their bond projects, capital facilities projects.
Yeah.
And so we are asking you, we've given you a list of all of those projects attached. Well, the ones that we're aware of, there are certainly many more. The sidewalk at Pedaluma High School, for example, massive tripping hazards and so that we want to keep going with some of these projects so that we can make sure that when we open school in the fall that our, our buildings are secure for students at that time. So we're asking the board to adopt this resolution so that we can continue to move forward with, with projects that we believe are essential, are essential infrastructure projects.
Okay, so I have a question of, just, I'm just wondering because I know that there, you probably have a gazillion projects, but well, kind of like, what's the percentage? I mean, are most of our projects now considered essential? Or how did you come up with these particular projects? How many are these and considerate, you know, when you look at the rest of the projects that we have?
We have not left any projects out because we don't have the money to fund non-essential projects. So almost every project we fund are, I believe, considered essential to student, the student learning environment, ultimately student safety and, and really also the preservation and protection of our facilities to ensure students have a good learning environment. So we haven't really left any out. Everything that we're working on, we believe is essential, whether it's, whether it's a mechanical system in the basement at Pen Grove or whether it's repairing, replacing the mechanical systems at Kennelworth, as you know. That's been two or more years in the making. I, I can see Erin is in attendance and so I want to assure her that we are moving forward. We have designated that as an essential project.
Say a lot if she weren't muted about this, yeah.
So, but, but honestly, I mean, everything we're doing is, is really essential to the learning environment for our students and it, whether it's essential right at this moment or whether it will be essential when kids get back, we have to keep them moving, so.
So are they all going on right now? It seems like it would be perfect because there's nobody there, so they can.
They are in various phases and we are definitely trying to make hay while the sun is shining. So for example, one essential project is the track at Grant. And that, we are moving forward with removing that track as a hazard to students and staff and really the community who walk on it because it's a slipping hazard.
Awful.
So we're hoping.
Liability in the future.
Absolutely. But we're hoping to do that in early May because we'll get much better pricing on it in early May. And then we can get that out of the way while we work, we're working on some of the larger roofing and mechanical projects. So it all just depends on the long lead time. If, if it takes us eight weeks to order mechanical units, we may not be able to do that earlier. If we can, we're certainly moving those up if possible.
Chris, my guess is a lot of their proposals were based upon, you know, no access to site between, you know, eight and two. Is there any indication that they may be able to speed these projects through with full access?
That's a great question, but most of our projects, we were gearing up for the summer, so most of them knew that we were going to take advantage of summertime. I think the bigger issue is that we're seeing, and you saw that in the bid opening with the mechanical and roofing projects that we, that are on this agenda. Those came in far below the engineer's estimate because we're, we're, we're kind of in a perfect opportunity of taking advantage of a, of an environment in which we can get very favorable bids and we're also communicating to our contractors that we can be much more flexible and allowing them to start earlier and having greater access. So we're not trying, like, you think about Cherry Valley and Pengrove, we have such a small window of six weeks to try to get anything done. And we're doing a large roofing mechanical replacement project at Cherry Valley. So getting that started earlier allows us to not have to pay premium time to get, to get that done, so.
So what we are, we are seeing that the people that, that are working on essential projects right now, the contractors have been doing a very, very good job of, of meeting all of the requirements associated with just safe distancing, you know. Quite frankly, the, the contractors don't carry a lot of staff anyways. And so you know, it's still a relative, even like, say, take the painting projects at Pedaluma High School, it's still a relative ghost town and people working individually at different wings. And so.
But we've also, we've also, we've also taken additional precautionary steps. So for example, when we're doing our pre-bid meetings, when we've had more than 10 contractors show up, we split it into two smaller groups.
Great.
Making sure people have gloves and hand sanitizer. So if they're going up and down ladders, they're using gloves, they're not using their hands. We're encouraging people to bring masks if appropriate. So we're, we're, and like we did our bid opening, we held it outside so that people weren't, contractors weren't in a small room. So we're taking steps to make sure that we're able to maintain appropriate social distancing while we're going through our process.
Cool. That was my one question, but you answered it.
Okay, good. And that's, that's for our staff safety as well.
Right, yeah.
So, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions about this resolution? Then let's vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, moving on. Discussion information, William Government Quarterly Union Complaint Report. No complaints? Looks good. I guess that's all we can really say.
Kudos.
Hi, Matthew.
Educational services, distant learning, grades, evaluation of student achievement, temporary addendum. So I have questions. I guess I'll, I'll start.
Yeah.
I want to know how, how elementary teachers are receiving work since they're not on Google Classroom. I want to talk about makeup work. I think that teachers should have to take it, not they take it. Just my opinion. And then I've had some complaints about, from the junior high about kids not having access or not getting the right link for Zoom and then being marked absent because they didn't show up because they didn't have the link. So I don't know if it's, teachers need to be, to relax a little bit during this time or, I don't know, but those are some of the things that I've been hearing.
All right, so let me, let me jump in on a few of those.
And Joanna wants to chime in too.
Okay. So I want to pose all the questions and then I'll try to answer them.
Were you going to answer Ellen's first?
I don't know. How do you want me to? You want to throw out all the questions and then I'll try to hit them all?
I did have one that was kind of piggybacking on one of Ellen's. Are they taking role? Is that why the kids are being marked absent?
That was my question. It was attendance.
So, so two different things. So attendance, the state hasn't given us any guidance on attendance. They just said you should take it. So, so the, so it doesn't affect, attendance is not connected to the grade in distance learning, two, two separate things. The state may come out with some guidance on attendance, but for now, they're just saying you should probably continue to track it somehow, some way.
And are you sure it's not affecting grades? So the kid, it on?
Yeah. Are some teachers connecting it to grades, especially in junior high and high school?
I.
Even though there's no guidelines on it, have the, do the teachers know?
There's no guidelines and hear about attendance.
Right, we have, we have different guidelines on attendance. You know, we can definitely clarify and make sure that staff understands that during distance learning, attendance and grades are two separate things.
Please.
And attendance should not affect grades. Now, I do want to just, while we're on attendance, so the state has said, you know, for purposes of calculating ADA, they're going to use the days, you know, of enrollment up through February 29th. So, you know, so we're tracking attendance more for compulsory education reasons and still tracking it, but it's not connected to the funding. So we use ARES, as you know, for student information system. And ARES came out with some ways that we could quote-unquote "track attendance" using their system. And we kind of looked at some of those options and decided the way we're counting attendance is if a student participates in any way during the week, they're counted as present. So if they complete work, they're present. If they can pop in on one of the regular check-ins a teacher does through Zoom or through whatever, they're present. If they do an assignment, but they don't check in, they're still present because they, they participated. They did some work. They checked in, maybe the teacher phoned home. So we're just, you know, if there's any sign of life in participation, they're, they're present for our purposes.
Really appreciate part of this evaluation of student achievement to, to just clarify that attendance and grades are not connected because sometimes kids, you know, their, their computer crashes or, you know, whatever happens and they can't check in. They shouldn't be penalized for that.
Right.
I would say, if I could just jump in, I think Cliff has already made this pretty clear, but there aren't any clear guidelines yet and he's absolutely correct. We are taking attendance of final P, both P2 and annual as of month seven, which for us is as of February 21st. And so both P2 and annual attendance will be the same this year. So we're already moving our way through that. However, even the auditors, because we've reached out to our financial auditors who audit this for both ADA and compulsory education, they're waiting for guidelines as well as far as how they're going to audit this. So I just want to make it clear that we don't know that there's going to be no need for a paper trail, which is why Cliff is saying we're, we're taking weekly attendance, if you will, and still expecting people to sign their rosters or whatever we come up with because at the end of the day, I could still see the state coming out saying, we need to see some evidence of that compulsory education.
I just don't want to.
It won't be daily or hourly, but, but we just don't know what it's going to look like.
I understand it's kind of a complicated fluid situation. I just don't think it should be attached to grades.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we can make that clear. I mean, I will say at, at the, at the heart of this, it's, you know, we're, we're trying to be cautious that no student's grade is lowered, you know, unless there's a plethora of evidence that we know the student had access. You know, we've reached out, we've been proactive and connecting and prodding and, and trying to get the kid on board. You know, if, at the end of the day, a kid fails to participate and we know it's not an access issue, we know there weren't techno, you know, tech, technological glitches. Technically, you know, a teacher does have discretion to, you know, to lower a grade. But at the root of this, it's, we're trying to, you know, hold students harmless, we're trying to do no harm, which was at the root of the discussion that the county superintendents had. Now, of course, the state did finally come out with guidance on grading after this went to you. So, so this state. Well, the state came out, ours is pretty in line with what the state said, but they give examples, you know, you could continue to give letter grades. You could give credit, no credit as a final grade. We're still assigning, we're still going to be assigning letter grades, grade six through 12. We're doing credit, no credit for individual assignments. For assessments, teachers still wanted the option to be able to grade them, you know, on a point scale, viability, so they could see kind of where the kids were at. They didn't want to do assessments as credit, no credit. So I should add, you know, we worked with some of our PFT leadership and teachers to kind of, kind of develop this and we threw around options and ideas. And that was one of the things that came out in that collaboration was the ability to still give kids, you know, credit for participating in assessments, but still wanting to be able to see where they were at.
Yeah, so I think we're, I, I think we are, it's been a really good process of working on this particular initiative and there's been a lot of work that's done with PFT. So I think we're all on board with the general concept. And I know they're willing to work with us if we have unique situations where within an individual teacher here or there where we need to, because there's going to be. We need to, because there's going to be gaps in this. There's no way that you can write language. It's not going to fit in. There's going to be crevices in that. I know that we can work with them to try to address some of that. And if we find that there's something truly systemic. That requires some language change, then, you know, I, I feel pretty confident that, that, that Cliff and. And Sandra can come bring something, you know, bring a, bring a, you know, an addition to it. I think it's. Like Cliff said, the, the most important piece in all of this is, it makes it really challenging from a state level is. Every district is so different. Like I have colleagues that have situations where. A good proportion of their population do not have cell phone service or wireless in these communities that they live in. And so, you know, there's a big concern about punishing, punishing kids that cannot get access to the curriculum. And, you know, I, I, I want, we want to make sure at the same time, we're balancing out that. All of our kids should be able to get access and we should be able to do everything possible to make sure all of our kids get access. But also they do bear some set of, set of responsibility of participating.
I totally agree. Don't want to penalize because they can't get on or their, their computer crashed. Or, you know, their parents are not. You know. Making sure they're working, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I, I totally hear you. I, I will say in these, you know, challenging unprecedented situations. You know, we have great staff. Classified, certified, who've been, you know, on a daily basis, just like us, learning. What to do, how to handle this, you know, how to handle this whole situation. And I know that our, our, our staff, you know, on the whole are fair. And understand these are, these are challenging circumstances. So. We, you know, we, at the root of this, we wanted to make sure, you know, that we're, we're, we're trying not to. You know, we're trying to hold, you know, students harmless, but we also want to give credit for. Students who, you know. Want to be able to increase their grade. We also. You know, want to be careful that if, you know, if the option exists, which it does to lower grade, that all those things are considered and taken care of. But I mean, we can, we can definitely clarify with our staff, but I will say they, you know, I, I believe most of them. You know, are reasonable, are fair. Caitlin's got a question. Gary?
I'm gonna mute, I'm gonna unmute you.
It's less of a question, it's more, I think parents don't necessarily understand, so they're probably complaining about attendance issues when they don't. The average parent doesn't know about ADA and other things. So I think it's logical to think of. Attendance like impacting grades, even though I don't think any teachers are actually doing that. So I think it's more of parents understandable anxiety around this whole new system.
Well, and I think what we can do is we're, we're going to bring back this conversation to our leadership team. To find out what specifically are they doing to, you know, to reach out to their staffs. And making sure that we were, were completely calibrated. I think we're, we're pretty close in calibration. I think there are going to be some, some unique circumstances, individuals here and there that we may have to have a, another conversation with to, to make sure. I know that, that this is really, you know, some of the concerns that, that I have are in particular around our seniors.
Yeah.
Knowing how. Knowing how some seniors, I'm not, not that you're going to be completely surprised, but knowing that some seniors scramble. The last three months of the school year.
Yes, they do.
To, and, and when you're not in a. A daily inter, interaction and relationship with a teacher. Um, I don't know how that's going to play out at the end for students. So I'm hoping that, that we're identifying those kids and we're reaching out to them. And doing whatever we can to make sure that. Our students are getting their, their, giving every, every opportunity possible to graduate on time.
What about elementary schools receiving work? Since they don't have Google Classroom, is it up to the teacher to figure that out or is there a policy about that?
So Gary, you might want to unmute David. He can help chime in a little bit. So we're, we're doing anything and everything. So.
I need to find David. Who's, where is he?
He's the other Petaluma City School. We, we, the week before we started distance learning, we had some device. Handouts for the younger grades. We also had some packet work handout those first few days. So I know, you know, not everyone necessarily is using Google Classroom. That's obviously very common, but. We're, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of different things to, to, to take and receive work. David, you want to jump in?
The elementary kids aren't on Google Classroom, don't have Google. Really? I asked my grandson, he didn't know what I was talking about. He's in fourth grade.
It does vary from, from class to class, but they do have the potential for it and the teachers have the choice to use it. They, they don't have to actually use their email accounts to use their G Suite account to log into Google Classroom. So it is, it is available to the lower grades. We recommend for the lower grades for the learning management system that they use CSO, which is a, a great way to show different learning artifacts through. Through various modalities, but typically through video, so a student can demonstrate their knowledge through. Some sort of video artifact that they can record on the, on their iPad.
So yeah, so we're, we're learning to be flexible and try to find different ways to receive that work. So we do know that for some students, we're still going to have to do some sort of. You know, packet drop off and receipt, whether that's a Dropbox, whether that's lined with the food pickups or not. But there's still going to be, you know, some kids who try as we might, they're not going to have access. Either the access won't reach their house or there's no cellular, so like the, you know, a portable hotspot wouldn't work either. So, you know, we're, we're still learning, we're still reaching out family by family and trying to figure out who has access, who doesn't. Um, I can tell you McDowell of, of, of all our schools, that probably be the school. That you'd think might have the least amount of access. So they have all but 35 students who have internet and wifi at home. So we're working individually with those 35 families and trying to help set them up with some of the free options. So a, a lot more of our students just, just on the first pass, you know, have access to internet than. Then I guess I would have guessed beforehand, which is a good thing, but. You know, we're, we're still, day by day, we're learning what works, what doesn't work. You know, CSO is a great tool. Kids can, can take a video of their learning and then that video is transmitted back to the teacher. Teacher can see exactly what the kid's doing. I mean, we've got kids taking photos, you know, of documents, of artifacts, sending that into the teacher. There's a lot of different things going on.
And then makeup work, especially for seniors. You know, maybe they were planning on going in and making up something, taking a test, and then all of a sudden there's no school. What about? That, is it up to them if they want to take it or shall they? I mean, they may take it or they shall take it.
So what, what this AR has i- in it is just that. If there was any makeup work that had either already been submitted before spring break. Or was in the process of being made up, that hasn't been made up yet. That, that all needs to take, you know, that all needs to take place and that all needs to be accounted for and included. And once that's calculated, you know, technically that's the student's grade as they went into spring break. So understanding, we just cut. Right as we went into spring break, it wasn't a clean break, it wasn't the end of the grading period, right? Grading period is almost over, it's next week.
I was going to ask you about that. So are they going to be, are, are teachers going to be calculating grades for the, and posting them on Ares?
Yeah, we have a grading period ending next week. So we're going to take into account this, you know, this first little piece of distance learning and. Assign grades. But as far as, I just want to also say, say that we've been working on an FAQ specific to grading, it's not attached to the agenda. Just all these different scenarios. So, you know, what does credit mean? What does no credit mean? How are these things communicated to families? Does this affect the student's GPA? How will students be able to make up work? You know, will attendance affect a student's grade? So that's another one. So we haven't, we haven't fully. Done our broad, you know, our marketing campaign on this to everyone until, you know, it came to the board. But we're ready to finalize that FAQ and send it out to everyone, put it on our website. So students know, parents know. And our teachers are on board as well.
So is this going to come back to us as an action item at our next meeting? It seems like it should be.
No, it's an AR. It's not a, it's not a board policy. If we need to add things to the AR, we can always do that. But it, it'll come back. This is a first look at it and so we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back if you, if you want to look at it again down the road. Typically don't do that, but we will, if that's what you want to do.
I would like to see it again.
Okay, so watch, take a look at what gets rolled out. As far as the Q and As and whatnot, we'll bring it back to see if there's any additional conversation we want to have on it. Okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
I just want to say, I, I like the, you know, it errors in the side of the student. I like that. And I'm, and what I'm hearing is the process, you know, the teachers are, help develop this with administration. And, and, you know, on the higher ed side, you know, we've already seen that. They're going to make adjustments for students graduating during this period. So I, I like the direction this is going.
Me too. Yeah, I do too. I just, I just had a second question.
Yeah, I just want to, again, you know, give praise where praise is due. You know, our teachers have been, you know, very reasonable, very flexible. And when the state came out with their guidance after the fact, after we put this together, I mean, we were right in line. With what the state was thinking as far as holding students harmless, you know, doing no harm, being careful. While still having, you know, a carrot, still having a motivation to keep. You know, to keep learning, to keep putting forth effort, because there are districts out there that have gone to, this is all optional. Or other, other things. So we still have, you know, we still have the carrot, we still have a way to. To help our kids, you know, be motivated to learn. We are doing new instruction. It isn't just all review like some other places. So I was happy to see that our thoughts were in line with, with what the state came out with after the time.
Okay, anything else before we move on? You know, I just want to say that I think you guys have been amazing. I think the staff. I agree. Everybody, I mean, uh, you know, being, I don't know how many 10,000 miles away. And watching all of this over the course of three weeks, it was, I was, you know, kind of like Caitlin, you know, crying. Because.
I was crying happy tears about something.
I just thought our district or everybody, the parents, teachers, you know, staff, because, I mean, everybody just worked together. And I could just see that all of you were working way overtime to try to pull this together. And it did feel very proactive to me, even though it was very, I was very far away from the action. Reading about other districts that weren't even close to being. Thinking, you know, thinking along these lines at all. So I really thank all, everybody in our community for just, and you guys for really putting in these. And our teachers, my goodness. Trying to, with curriculum in a week.
Yeah, I wanted to, definitely, definitely across the board, team effort, the whole, the whole organization. I mean, our, our teachers, I said this in a, one of the million Zoom meetings we've been in these last couple of weeks. When this started, I didn't have any gray in this thing.
Weird, actually.
You know, when, when the, the teachers, um, you know, they've been training for this day for years. With all our one-to-one and all our technology training. So this is the greatest, you know, real life PD you've ever had. So I mean, if, if anybody was going to be prepared for this, you know, it was going to be us. And everyone's learning something new every day and kind of applying all those things they've been learning over the past few years. So.
So I think it's to them. I think that the, 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 if there's a lesson from all of this, it's like every piece of the puzzle. Needed to be, to be fit in place just right for us to get down the, move down the path and. You know, leadership, classified leadership as well, had to be in place for us to move down the path, the certificated leadership. Folks have done a really, really great job, you know, kind of rallying around the cause. It's not perfect, we know that, but it's a first good start, you know, and we'll, we have to just continue to refine at this, from this point forward. But I do think we are a little bit ahead of the game. I know we're ahead of the game in relation to our, our Sonoma County counterparts. And I believe that is because of the outreach that was done with our classified and our certificated teachers and. The Federation and CSEA. I mean, that's, it was, it was huge. So I want to thank them as well.
Yes.
On a 10.3?
10.3, Rise Academy.
So. We've had, we've had some discussions in the past regarding Rise Academy. This is kind of a, a more sobering conversation. You know, one of the things that we've committed to is providing really true equity for all of our students and access. And being able to say that we are providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students, no matter what grade level they're in. There have been some challenges with the Rise Academy. And logistically, financially challenges, it's, it's our, our most expensive per, per, per student program bar none. It's off the charts, expensive. And we went to, we went a good couple of months in the school year without even having a, a student. Yet having teachers on the payroll. It's, it's not quite work, it has never really quite worked the way that we, we wanted it to work. You know, taking students that show, you know, that have a, a number of high risk. Behaviors that they've, they've developed over time and their developmental assets are not where they should be. And placing them all into the same classroom together. Has not been a recipe for success, no matter how good the teacher is. It hasn't been, and I'll let other people speak in cabinet, but it, it, it's been painful to watch. It's not, quite frankly, it's not something I would want my child in. That program, the way that it's currently configured, and we really felt compelled to do something about this right now. So I'll, I'll open it up. I'll, I'll open you up too, Matthew and Chris. Chris is open, Cliff's. So I'll let you guys jump in.
I would just, I would just echo Gary's sentiments. I mean, I think, you know, the, the, the teaching staff there is phenomenal. It's, it's the, it's the program design and we've talked with the junior high principals about. What should this look like? I mean, I've had conversations even with, with PFT, with Sandra about, towards the beginning of the year, I remember the conversation being. Wow, we have 1.2 teachers waiting for any students to come. And so it's a, it's a. And, and just echo what, what Gary said, I, I walk into that classroom, I've walked in it and, and it's. It, um, I think there's wonderful teachers and it's a very, very challenging, challenging environment. And I think students could be better served in, if we were to do it in a different way.
Would, if we closed that program. What, what would happen with those students? I know there's not too many, but.
We, what we would have, I believe. Don't, the last time I looked, it may have changed. We have maybe one or two returning students for next year. All the others, yeah.
Remember, it's a, it's a seven, eight program, so the vast majority are eighth graders. And there, I think, I think it's one or two seventh graders who would be going into eighth grade, who would be absorbed back at the junior highs.
So, so. Yeah, part of this evolution of the program was when it be, when it changed from a community day school to an alternative, you know, school or program of choice. The freshmen ended up becoming part of San Antonio.
Right.
So this became a seven, eight program this past year. And as, as Gary said earlier, when the school year started. We didn't have any eighth graders in the program because they were now ninth graders at San Antonio. we didn't have any eighth graders in the program because they were now ninth graders at San Antonio. We didn't have any seventh grade students hold over into the new year. So we started off with no one for a while, waiting for, you know, wait for Sins to come. So one of the things we did is we, we talked to, you know, both, we talked to, you know, Becky at, uh, you know, at Rise in San Antonio. And, you know, they just barely took the program over. And, you know, didn't, didn't really have, you know, um, a whole lot of time to revamp a lot of things. So they did also recognize the challenges of, you know, not necessarily having a student body for a while at the beginning of each year. We also talked to the, we met with the junior high principals to talk about, you know, how could we better support these students before they ended up or ended up in a situation where they needed a program like Rise? And what, what would that look like potentially back at, at the junior high? Because we, we don't have a great track record of students who go to Rise and then come back to the comprehensive. They're not successful or they don't come back. So we kind of created
Less than 10% that, that have matriculated back, uh, have been successful in the comprehensive.
Yeah. So what's, you know, what started as a, you know, a good idea, just if you evaluate it programmatically, it hasn't been effective. So we're, we're at the point now, do we choose to try to support these students in a different way back at the comprehensive? So those are some of the discussions we've been having.
And I would just, I would just add, although it shouldn't just be about the money clearly, but when we did our per pupil calculations under ESSA as required for eighteen nineteen, most of the schools came in between ten and eleven thousand dollars at the comprehensives and even at the elementaries. Crossroads, because this was for last year, eighteen nineteen, came in at thirty-one thousand per student.
Oh, my God.
Just to give you an idea. And, um, and that was based on fourteen students, not five or six students. So that, that was last year when they had more students. So I'm just, you know, when you look at the economies of scale, when we look at our moderate to severe South County, it's thirty-nine thousand per student versus thirty-one. Just to give you some economies of scale. So it, it, it becomes really hard to support a small, small program like this without it becoming extraordinarily expensive on a per people basis.
Now, that being said, um, you know, making a, a switch has been at, because remember that in the previous crossroads program was a seven, eight, nine. Our ninth graders have really thrived going into the San Antonio model. So that has been really successful. There's a real positive there. It's, uh, it's the seven and eights that we're, we're really struggling with. And, um, we were working on, on what are specifically can we do with our mental health support? What specifically can we do with tutorial support? To address, you know, the unique issues, they, the kids, they're not cookie cutter kids. They all come with a, a story. And we gotta, we're gonna have to take them by, you know, by kid, by case, by need and really address it and, and drill in. The good news is that, you know, the great majority of students are matriculating through. And we're going to have to make sure that we, we give them a successful landing spot, which they were going to do anyways. It hasn't been necessarily, I'm very success, we haven't been necessarily very successful with them in in the last, certainly in the last six, seven years.
Hey Gary, Becky, Becky's here on her phone, but she's muted. I don't know if she wants to say anything.
I don't, I, I don't see her online.
It says Rebecca, it says Rebecca's iPhone on the thing. Says Rebecca's iPhone.
It's different on everybody's screen. It's off, you're, you're, I have one.
Yeah, you unmuted her. She's unmuted.
Okay, so I can talk now?
Yeah.
Oh, I was just going to agree with you. I, I think it's very true. We, we haven't been really successful with the transition from crossroads to the comprehensive sites. A year at Rise isn't enough time to really make a determination. But I, I also, I agree that it doesn't make sense, given the few number of students that we work with.
So we're going to be bringing this one back. This is part of, unfortunately, this is, this is part of us, us getting a little bit leaner and meaner and focusing our, our efforts and our energies, you know, on what's really a better way to support these kids. I think what the, the message that I might take away from this that I, that I have is we're just not going to accept putting a kid, anybody in any program. If it's not working, we're obligated to make a change. And, and we, we're not going to let these kids, these kids are as important as anybody else's children. And we want to make sure that we give them something better. And I think we can do that. And if we can't do it, we're going to try something else the next year. Cause we gotta, we gotta get it right. That's all I really want to say on it.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, before we move on to future business, I want to go back to a public comment. Are there any public comment? Is there public?
Hi, Michelle's having technical difficulties. We have one public comment and I can read that for you all.
Well, that's how we're doing it.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. So do you want me to just go ahead and start reading it?
Yep.
Okay. This is from Phoebe Ellis. It says, first of all, I want to thank you all for working on behalf of all PCS students during this challenging time. I wanted to share my thoughts about what seemed to be an early cancellation of the remainder of the school year on April first. I understand that everyone is doing their best to follow guidelines with public health as the primary concern. But I am curious why PCS made the decision to cancel in-person learning for the remainder of the school year on April first. It seems premature as the situation and guidelines are changing daily, if not hourly. The teachers and students are already engaging in distance learning, so they do not need extra time to prepare to extend the method. Alternatively, students, teachers and parents are holding out hope that they can actually attend classes, meet with teachers and see their friends, even if it is only for a few days. Most students depend on school for some level of social and emotional support. And to be without it for two point five months with no planning or preparation is devastating for all parties. If the shelter in place order is lifted anytime in May, it would be so fulfilling and rewarding for students to be able to return to their sites, even if only for a few days, to engage in learning and socialization with teachers, staff and peers. It would be so meaningful for students to have closure and to check in with their respective school sites, which for so many is a huge part of their security and safety net. And for the high school seniors, one last time to be on their school campuses, thank teachers and administrators and be with friends in a safe setting where they have spent the past twelve years. I have a senior at PHS, so I have spoken to many other senior parents. And we are all willing to help brainstorm about special activities, graduation, prom for the seniors, even if it is virtual or in compliance with social distancing. I think it would be helpful if someone from PCS or a site administrator could address senior families in the district with a more emotional or compassionate email, offering some hope or ideas, or perhaps a, start a committee to brainstorm for our senior students. I get that this is all uncharted territory. But now more than ever, we need to keep the students' physical and emotional wellbeing at the forefront and not make any hasty decisions. I understand that none of this may be possible if the shelter in place order is extended or it is not safe for the schools to open, but it feels hopeless to have already made that decision. I hope you do not think I am being insensitive to what is going on in the world. I'm trying to be realistic, hopeful and offer some light in what appears to be such a disappointing outlook for all our students and families. Thank you again for all of the hard work you are doing for our students, teachers and staff and stay healthy. And that's the end of the comment.
Thank you. Okay, so future business.
So Go ahead, go ahead. No, 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 no. You guys get yours out and then I'll share, share what I have for you.
I got three. Uh, two of them were just addressed by Phoebe, so I want to thank her. I'm actually want to think ahead to the possibility that, uh, you know, we are distance learning all the way through, including graduation. And, uh, and particularly with the seniors in our district, some way of celebrating their accomplishments. And, and as Phoebe points out, uh, giving them opportunity for closure. This pandemic is going to end at some point hopefully, and hopefully with, you know, minimal impact on us. But when it does, I want us to think about some way to celebrate our seniors. Hopefully it's still in May, but if it's not, we should be thinking about that. So maybe a discussion about that, bring in Phoebe and other ideas. I also, uh, along the same lines, and this has already been echoed, I would like the board to be thinking about some way of acknowledging the, the staff and the teachers through this effort, because it really has been amazing. And so I don't know what that is either, uh, but, uh, maybe some kind of public acknowledgement. But somehow we need to do that, I think. The third, this is more, um, very long-term. We're in this new, uh, you know, era of, of closures of schools for physically in this sense. But also in the fall, we experienced it through power outages. At some point, I would like the board and the community to think about lessons learned during this distance learning event that might translate into asynchronous instruction during a power outage. I'm trying to think about, yeah, power, power outages from fires or from PG&E shutdowns. I'm trying to think ahead to the fifteen days of planned power outages that PG&E said we should prepare for in the next several years. We kind of covered five of them with an extended, you know, potential, you know, spring break into the calendar. Are there distance learning lessons that we're learning right now that might be able to shorten lost instruction days during a power outage? That's something I would like the, the board to come back to and discuss.
I think that's a great idea, Sheldon. I also think that, um, that conversation should not, it, it's not just the board. It should include PFT. Because they're the ones on the front lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I also, um, want to echo Sheldon's thing about doing something for seniors. Although as of now, the governor has said the schools will probably be closed, but he is also keeping the option open that we may go back. Um, so I hope we do. I don't know if that's going to happen, but it would be nice. Any other future business?
Yeah, yes, but I don't, we will be, um, we will be coming to the next board meeting. And we're going to be doing a presentation on, because it was the asked to do one on the TOSSAS. We're also going to do one on environmental literacy. And the third item, help me out folks, what was the third item?
I had an item on circle of education. I spoke with Tyrone and Tiffany. And I know that we had originally our board, um, training with circle of education planned. And that date has now come and gone, but they are rescheduling the dates with us. And so I just wanted to toss out a date this evening. You don't have to know your calendar right now. But currently they have tentatively for Monday, I'm sorry, for Tuesday, August eleventh from six to nine thirty is a tentative date. So if you want to go back and check your calendars and see if that date could work, then, you know, just bring back and let me know at the next board meeting. So I can confirm with circle up. But again, that's Tuesday, August eleventh from six to nine thirty PM.
When does school start in Au- in August?
Six. Matthew, I'll let Matthew look that up while I, while I give you, I'll unmute you, Matthew.
Next day, August twelfth.
Cause yeah, it would be nice if we could do this before school starts.
It's the day before school starts.
That would be fine with me, but.
The third presentation that we're going to do is on adult education. Adult education wanted to come do a presentation. So we've got those three at the next meeting. The following meeting will do a presentation on transportation. Cause that was asked. So we'll, 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 we'll do our very best to, to navigate through that remotely. In regards to, to the, the more, the most pressing item that, that Sheldon talked about, graduation closure celebration. We'll put that on as a, as a discussion item at the next board meeting. I'll have a little bit more information to share. We're working really closely with our, with our county partners on this. And we want to make sure more than anything that we do it right. To me, like it's a graduation is like a wedding. You can't quite, you can't, there's only one, is, people have a certain expectation. And anything that you do that's less than that is bashed, is less than that. And so we'll, we're, we're looking at, at, um, we're talking right now with our, with, with the high schools about ways that we can do some things in the meantime that are not graduation related, but are just good things to do for kids. At the same time, um, look at what, what's possible when we get through all of this. So we, we'll, we'll come back, we'll come back and talk specifics on this.
It also sounds like we have some really motivated parents that would like to contribute to that conversation. Which I think would be important.
Yeah, I think, um, we, we definitely, um, we Yep.
Okay, so, um, the signing of papers will happen tomorrow. Michelle, I will show up tomorrow.
And Maddie, you've got a date already set to come in too.
She's muted.
I'll still be in, uh, in quarantine and through Thursday, so I'll come in on Friday.
Perfect.
But I'll come in tomorrow, Michelle. So I guess meetings adjourned.
Thank you, everybody who came in and participated.
Yeah, that was great.
It was like a lot of people.
My mom's here. Hi, mom.